All right, it is six o'clock and I'd like to open up our city council meeting for March 3rd, 2025. I ask that we please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us prepare ourselves as you see fit. Most gracious and heavenly Father, Lord, if you come this day to say thank you, oh Father God, we thank you for watching over us each and every day, oh Father God. We thank you for allowing us to just take a breath, oh Father God. Lord, we just ask you continue to watch those that have come out to be a part of this city council meeting and those that have wished to come but were not able to, oh Father God, we ask that you watch over them too. Lord, as we start this city council meeting, I ask that we do things decent and in order and let things be done for the betterment of the city of North Chicago. This is my prayer in your darling son Jesus' name and for his sake, amen. We have roll call.
Alderman Jackson?
Present.
Alderman Coleman? Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Allen? Alderman Smith?
Present.
Alderman Murphy?
Present.
Alderman January?
Present via Zoom.
Oh, not yet, right.
Not yet, okay. Okay, first of all, I'd like to let you know that Alderman Allen said he was not going to be able to attend tonight and was not going to be able to go on Zoom. Alderman Coleman, I know he said he had business, I don't know if he's going to be able to come up on Zoom.
He's there.
He's on Zoom, okay. And then Alderman January also said that she was, had obligations. So she would like to come on Zoom also. So at this time, can we do two at once? Could I have a motion to accept Alderman Coleman and Alderman January to Zoom?
So moved.
Then move Alderman Murphy, second by Alderman Smith, to allow Alderman Coleman and Alderman Murphy to come in through Zoom.
Alderman January.
Oh, January, what did I say, Jackson?
No, me.
Oh, sorry. All right, all right, okay. Yes, those two. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Motion carried, we are now allowing Alderman Coleman and Alderman January to come in through Zoom. So Lori just called them for the role purposes.
Okay. Alderman Coleman?
Present.
Okay, and Alderman January?
Again, present via Zoom.
Okay, omnibus vote agenda.
Mayor Rockham.
We're good? Alderman Evans, having a day today.
I would like to approve the omnibus vote agenda five dash one through five dash four as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then move Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Murphy, that the omnibus is only agenda be passed as presented. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman January?
Yes, I would like to move if the city council meeting agenda could be moved up, please.
Would?
Move the city account, agenda needs to be moved up.
I'm sorry, there you go.
There you go. Requesting for five dash four approval of the BP and T change order to extend the 2024 water treatment plant as it's presented on the agenda to be moved to the regular agenda. Due to fiduciary and it is our only commodity in the city, needs to be have a different type of vote.
Okay, there is, that's got to be called for roll, right? Okay.
I need a second.
No, we're going to go ahead and just move it, Alderman, is that okay?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, no problem. All right, five dash four, we're going to move to our regular agenda. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen? Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
No.
Motion carried. Public comment.
Norman Cole?
Hello, council, my name is Norman Cole. I come, well, moving forward, I spoke with you all a few, couple of months back about some properties I had that I was having an issue with. You guys are trying to go back and take it back from me, but my, well, the points were that I came to council July 1st, 2024. You guys gave me 18 month extension. I gave you guys a copy of it on the Miranda page to council, actually, Madam Miranda. I have already submitted my plot of survey, my grading plans, my WDO plans. My home plans are up to date and submitted. Also, I had two more other plans that I was working on for Zero Green Bay Road. My application was submitted, was signed contracts, I had one contract that was expired and I had another contract that's for a sprinkler system. New codes did come up in October or November due to I wasn't pivot of, nobody told me about. And so January 2nd, 2020, 25, I emailed Taylor in the economic development department, you know, that I applied for and then I purchased it, when I purchased my property. Also, he had, he had, I inquired with him about, you know, the codes being up to date and that I would need more time doing that, I would have to change the water systems and other things that came with that. And with that timeframe, it was giving me due process, I believe, because it wasn't enough timeframe. My understanding was that I was awarded up until January 1st, 2026 to fully complete projects, not January 31st, 2025, which you guys have in your statement here on your, in your, in the Miranda. When I first got the extension, it was due because I bought the lots and the lots still had liens owed on them. So that was repiving when Mr. Nimrod was here and we found out that that was true, which you guys have copies of. And that was the reason why I did get the extension. I believe, you know, Taylor misconstrued and applied, applied incorrectly in the contract of this that was offered. You know, I asked Taylor emails, hey, that this contract extension letter, you know, and that I refused, refused what he was being, was being told to me. So at that time, Taylor told me to come down to city hall, you know. I was never emailed my contracts or anything at all that I asked for. Looking like I came, I came to council, everything got approved, but he told me that he would not bring it to council or bring it to the committee. So with like, 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 past two, three months, I've been coming to you guys about this, you know, trying to get this thing taken care of. Now we're in a situation where it may be going legal. Last do, you know, I had actually talked to them and tried to talk to the mayor as well about being grandfathered in that when I purchased these properties about the sprinkler system issue, but I know time is up, so in the conclusion, we can get to the bottom of this eventually, so we'll see how this turns out.
All right, thank you.
Rayon Edwards?
Good afternoon, evening.
Good evening.
Council, city. I wasn't going to come to this meeting, sat at home, I thought, prayed, I said, you know, I have to get up and I have to come up here and I have to speak. And today I'm going to be calm and I'm going to be as respectful as I can be, but I'm disappointed. And I don't need nobody to look at, at me. I'm a very, very intelligent young man. I read, I write, and I research very well. And what I've witnessed through this last process of this primary was beyond disgusting to me. From staff to elected officials and even to my community. But what was more striking to me and what's more even concerning to me is the numbers. And my elected officials see nothing wrong with the numbers. That we got over 40,000 people in the city of North Chicago, I don't care what the census say because we know everybody don't fill out the census. That we got all of these people in the city of North Chicago and they not engaged or excited to come to the polls to vote for nobody. That's concerning.
Edwards, that, that is starting to get into a political.
No, no, I'm talking about voting, I ain't talking about no candidate or none of that, because you guys have done that now. You're all the men done it before and nobody said anything. Let's just be fair now.
All right, go ahead, finish up. Finish up. Long as you keep it.
Another thing that we got to do is, when you're an elected official, one of the most disgusting things you can do is try to debate with anybody on a social media platform about anything. I put up a post, Mr. Mayor, and yo' Alderman, sir, called my seniors some greedy ass people.
Let's don't get into.
But, but that happened and at some point, somebody got to speak for them, it's unacceptable. And so I'm asking, do we reprimand people? Do we silence, what, what happens when this happens? Because these is the same people we asking for a vote. And sir, I'm disappointed in you too tonight because I've been at this podium and I've been loud, I didn't been all type of things. And not one time have you ever tried to stop me or have interrupted me for doing any of those things, but tonight you are. And that's disappointing to me, sir, it really is. Wow.
Margaret Carrasco?
Tonight, I'm here to tell North Chicago residents, wake up! Yes, don't you see you have another Tiffany Henney here, just like in Dalton? So the day of the election, February 25th, Tuesday, someone tagged me about a post alleging that the mayor's presence at the post. I'm an election judge, so I wrote back citing what the code is. The very next day, the mayor sends out code to my empty lot that my, me and my deceased dad, Rudy Patel, we've owned for about four, I don't know, 40 years. And all of a sudden, I get letter of violations, okay? So I'm here, well, well, I'm here, cupcake, to tell you, yes, I'm talking about you, Leon Rockingham.
Cupcake?
That I am going to notify the council about the ethics complaint, I'm finally against you on corruption. And that, and it's not going to go to the city council meeting, he's not going to go to the Lake County State Attorney, but to the. Sheriff in town, sir, his name is Donald Trump and he'll be chomping on the lips to investigate how you have misused federal grant, millions and millions of dollars of federal grant money here in North Chicago and for years and how you're illegally taking properties from homeowners, using about, they go there, write citations, all this kind of stuff. Yes, just wait, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to see you, Ms. Carrasco.
One second. Michelle Love?
Hello, my name is Michelle Love and this is Danielle Willis and we are your local Girl Scouts. We're like your car warranty, you're going to see us everywhere, okay? We just wanted to come and let the community know that we are here. We have not had a local Girl Scout in about eight years and we have over 25 girls, local girls. And we would love to partner with some of you, I've spoke with the mayor, I spoke with Mr. Kenneth before. And my kids go here, my son's been here since middle school, I am not originally from here, but I am now a North Chicagoan. And we just, we partnered with the, the fire department, we visited the, the police, yes, the police station. And we would just like your support, we meet at the local, the library, they give us a free space for our girls to come. And we have two troops, we have a younger troop and we have an older troop and we are trying to bring some of our older girls from, from ninth, oh no, I'm sorry, from sixth to 12th grade in. And ultimately, they learn leadership skills, they learn all about their community, how to be community helpers. And more importantly, they earn scholarships when it's all said and done. So if you guys can like find it in your heart to come, just see our girls at the library, we meet twice a month there and try to partner with you guys, but like I said, we're like a car warranty, so we're here, we're here to stay and we're trying to make a difference in our local girls' lives.
We would like any community outreach that you have, like that, for our girls to engage or to help.
Can I just want to ask one question about meeting days and times?
I was going to ask that same question.
Absolutely, so we do meet twice a month, on Saturdays, usually from two to four. Currently, we're in cookie season, I'm sure y'all have noticed. So right now, the girls are not meeting as well as I know that the library hosts the elections until like April 5th, I believe, is what the space was rented for or like reserved for.
Yes.
So after that, we'll be resuming our meetings. But most, most importantly, we're just looking for some more community outreach, some ways to help, to engage. We've been talking to local businesses lately just for cookie booths by themselves, but we would like to do more, so.
And one of our more ambitious projects that we're doing right now with our older troop is they're, they're working towards a trip to Thailand. So it's a 14 day trip to Thailand to go and work with the Asian elephants.
So they're looking for fundraiser opportunities as well.
Well, I just say, you know, we'd be more than happy to try to work with you. I know that myself, I sit on the Northeast Illinois Council for scouting. So, you know, whatever, you know, whatever we can do from our side, we'd be more than happy to.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Coleman?
Yeah, if you can pass my information along to her, I would like to contribute as well.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, very good.
Carmisia Hawthorne?
Good evenings, Mayor Leon Rockingham and all the city council, all our aldermen and everybody that, that's here tonight. I want to wish everybody well on this Monday night. And I am Commissioner Carmisia Hawthorne, I am actually Chair of Parks, I have nine parks up in Falls Park. If you have any concerns, because the summer is approaching, if you have any concerns with safety or anything you may see, if it's dogs or anything dealing with any type of vandalism, anything you're concerned may be with the shelters, I am the person you want to give a call. I will actually have my business cards in the back for you guys to take. Now on to the fun stuff. So coming up, what we guys need you to know, we have the daughter daddy dance that was rescheduled, guys, for March 22nd. We want to make sure that you get signed up, it starts about 6:00 p.m., again, that's the daddy daughter dance and it'll be held at Falls Park. It'll start at 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., so please sign up. Also, we have the casino trip coming up, yay! Our seniors love going to the casino trip and guys, this, this time, we're going to the Windcrest Casino that's actually located in Homewood, Illinois, and that trip is the 20th, I'm sorry, it's March 15th and the cost is $10. We still have opening spots, so you still have time to make that bus, guys. So again, that is March 15th, the Woodcrest, the Wind, the Wood Creek Casino trip. So please sign up, call the district and we will definitely get you squared away. Now, also for coming up, we got Easter coming up, guys. The Easter Acon, which will take place April 12th at 11:00 a.m. for our children. And then guess what? The Easter Acon for the adults, remember that? Bring your, bring your flashlights, it's going to be held at Falls Park Beach. And just remember, adults, we have adult prizes, so that's going to be some fun stuff, guys. That starts at about six o'clock, so please be mindful. Also, I would just like to thank everyone that came out to our Black History Celebration, the mayor, he actually came as our guest speaker. We want to thank each and every one of you that came out and supported us, it was very wonderful, we came together and it was just phenomenal. And just so you know, I brought booklets for our upcoming events, please see me, I'll leave some at the back, at the back of the city council meeting, at the meeting hall, so that way you guys can get them. Thank you so much and you guys enjoy this beautiful night.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody that had the public comments. Moving on to the regular agenda, we're going to do five dash four, a consideration approval of BT and T change order to extend the 2024 water treatment plant painting project to FY 25, not to exceed price of $100,000 for BT, BP and T construction.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans?
I would like to approve of BP and T change order to extend the 2024 water treatment plant painting project to physical year 2025, not to exceed price of 100,000 for BP and T construction as presented.
Second?
Remove Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Murphy, that five dash four be passed as presented, are there questions? Are there questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
Aye.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye. Motion carried, city bills?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that we approve the city bills in the total amount of 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,153,437 and 7 cents when funds become available.
Second. Remove Alderman Murphy, second by Alderman Jackson, that the city bills be passed as presented, are there questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead, Alderman January?
Thank you. And it's, who am I speaking with tonight, my question? I'm sorry, who?
Hi, Alderman January.
Oh, there you are, hi, how are you?
I'm great, yourself?
I wish I was better, but we'll get there. My usual questions, are there sufficient funds to cover this bill run? And when will the checks be cut and sent?
There are sufficient funds in the account to cover the bill run, the checks will be cut tomorrow and sent out on Wednesday.
Okay, and then what is the amount of the liquid amount in the water fund?
At the close of business day on Thursday was 5,422,019 cents.
Okay, and then, Mr. Treasurer, what is the non-liquid amount?
Sir Alderman, the non-liquid amount is 1,125,657 and 50 cents.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
No.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
No.
Motion carried. Miscellaneous business, anything under miscellaneous? Okay, hearing none, executive session, we do have something under executive session. So I'd like to have a motion that we go under executive, executive session for five, IOCS 120C, 122C 11 in regards to litigation. So moved. Second, remove Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Jackson, that the city council go into executive session. Any questions, roll call?
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
Aye.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Motion carried, to the audience, we should be in executive session, hopefully not too long and we'll be back in just a moment.
Alderman, can you please disconnect from the Zoom?
Reopen to, motion to reopen city council?
So moved.
Second.
Then move Alderman Murphy, second by Alderman Evans, city council stands reopening, is all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Oh, motion carried, that's me. Intertinate a motion to adjourn. Remove Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Jackson, what kind of candy you give me? Intertate them, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried, all right. Cupcakes can't handle the food.
We keep talking about candy and cupcakes, I'm going to need a snack.
At this time, I'd like to call the judiciary committee meeting to order, roll call, madam clerk.
Jackson?
Present.
Alderman Coleman?
Present.
Alderman Evans?
Yeah.
Alderman Allen? Alderman Smith?
Present.
Alderman Murphy?
Present.
Alderman January?
Present.
All right, at this time, we have one item for discussion, discussion review of Brookstone at Coles Park that generally is handled by Chief of Staff, who I think he stepped out.
I can, I can give enough.
Okay, update will be given by Attorney Silverman at this time.
So Benoit continues, I'm the same, we'll start with the safety pieces first. Benoit continues to make the safety checklist items improvements. They, we've received an update from the management company, I'm sorry, I'm reading from notes, through their local council and confirmed by Officer Diaz that all of the security lighting in the order is up and operating. Two private security officers have been posted and continue to work the grounds on weekend nights. Landlord has continued to actively remove problem tenants through a series of evictions and pre eviction notices. For Officer Diaz, the pace of police incidents is way down and the development and communication with management and residents has been good. Okay, the second thing we've been, any questions on this?
How many people were evicted?
I don't have that information.
How do we, do we know that it's for real or he's just giving us some fluff?
Well, this has all been confirmed by Officer Diaz, so. I'm sorry, Mr. Diaz.
But confirmed, but the numbers are down, confirmed on the evictions?
Again, I don't have the numbers, I'm, this is what's been reported back to us.
Okay, may I ask?
Okay, on the bond claim, we're working to get them a detailed punch list update in the next two weeks. We do need this to ensure that our lawsuit with the bond company, the surety bond company has appropriate allegations that are supported by actual action items. We took it as a positive sign that Benoit is taking the punch list matter bond claim seriously because they've retained a local law firm to take over the handling of the matter on, matters on the property related to the surety bond. Also, Benoit CEO has become directly involved and has issued directive to his on the ground people here to move quickly on a number of the items on the punch list that they do not dispute. The following itemized list of improvements that have committed, that they have committed to working on as quickly as weather allows and to pull permits include landscaping work estimated. and to pull permits include landscaping work estimated to start in April. Pavement stripping also uh uh estimated to start in April. Installation of detectable warning strips on pavement in March this month. Pavement patching also April. Installation of missing benches, April. An update uh of as-built drawings to the city's building uh department uh March of this month. That's the report.
Okay, and so any questions uh based on report given by Attorney Silverman? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I uh request a motion to adjourn the Judiciary Committee meeting. So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Murphy to adjourn the Judiciary Committee meeting. Uh roll call, please.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
At this time, the Judiciary Committee meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to open up the Public Works Committee meeting. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Yeah.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
Okay, the first item we have a discussion seeking to obligate two million, one hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cent in rebuilding Illinois' funds for the Argon Drive reconstruction project. Steve.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the city over the course of uh three years, going back to twenty twenty, uh year twenty twenty, received uh two million dollars uh one hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cents and rebuild Illinois. There was uh proceeds from the bond sales that the state Illinois did to cap the program. Uh money was sent to the city. The city put into their M F P account. By law, we're required to obligate that money by
Excuse me, can we have the mic turned on? I'm not able to hear.
I'm trying to turn it up now.
Thank you.
It's on, it's just can try again, please. Oh.
Hearing now? So the city received the 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 money to settle your bill and we're required to oblige. When we first received the funding, we knew off the top of our head that the best use of money was to save it and use it to help our town. So I thought it was on the drive. But that's whatever it is.
Any questions regarding it? Okay, item two.
Uh, the next item is uh to review and improve change order number one, reducing the contract value uh for or by one mil or one hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and ten cents. The new contract value of uh eight million, seven hundred uh ninety-three thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty cents for the Sixteenth and Pendle Avenue drink water uh Sixteenth and Pendle Avenue Transmission Main Improvement Project. This is the final balancing change order for the Sixteenth Street project. It came in two hundred thousand dollars.
All right.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Sounds great. Any question for anyone? All right, thank you, Steve. At this time, I'd like to close the Public Works Committee meeting. So move.
Second.
Move by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Murphy. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
All right, like to open up the committee as a whole. Could I have a roll call?
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Yeah.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
All right, we have two items. Uh both are dealing with uh licensing uh for the uh liquor. First one is discussion consideration of an amendment to Title A, Chapter thirteen, Section eight A, increasing the number of B dash W two liquor license request is Lucky Spin North Chicago located at fifteen hundred Sheridan Road. Right?
Just fair members of the council, before you lose the uh discussion item as an address guide for women's liquor code. Martin Spence located at fifteen hundred Black Sheridan Road currently.
Excuse me, madam. Yeah, it is. The mic is not working at the podium. We are not able to hear on Zoom at all.
Try something else.
Can you hear now? Hello?
Yes.
Feel like Frank Sinatra.
So the discussion and consideration of an amendment for B W two liquor licenses for the fifteen hundred block of Sheridan Road. Uh myself and Taylor met with the owner of this property. It's currently in operation with a poor license. So it's the Lucky Spin. It's a gaming cafe. They have a lot of dead space on that property. Uh I think the uh owner of that property first approached uh Alderman Coleman on this and then approached the mayor on it. Uh they're expanding into dead what's currently dead space. They've already submitted drawings and they're looking to open a convenient operation adjoining the uh where the gaming machines are where they will sell uh convenient items as well as uh they're asking to be able to sell packaged goods. The uh issuance of a license would be contingent on the work being completed and meeting uh all code requirements.
Alderman Murphy.
Um, I was looking at the application and I just wanted to make sure that I understand because it says describe the premises or place of business which is to be operated.
Please use mics.
I'm using my mic.
It's not, we're not able to hear you.
On the application, can you hear me now?
It's a little, it's a little bit better. Thank you.
Describe the premises or place of business which is to be operated under such license. And in the description, and I just, I just wanna make sure I'm clearly understanding. It says to sell beer and wine, so they want only to sell beer and wine, not hard liquor. But then it says off premises for off premises consumption. In other words, they're selling packaged liquor.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, at this uh at this time, uh Mr. Mayor's uh staff would ask that this be moved forward to council for uh consideration and approval.
Are there any questions regarding it? Alderman Jackson.
Mr. Mayor.
Wait a minute, uh Alderman Jackson, then you, Alderman Coleman.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So my question is um based on actions uh that we took last year, I believe it was, about trying to look at how many uh licenses for alcohol uh that the city of North Chicago has and and or um or looking to get. Where would this fit in that process? Is is this, we're talking a new license for these potential, well, we'll stick with the one with this particular organization. Are we talking a new license? And if so, how does it gonna fit in the program that we talked about trying to limit license? Point one. Point two is, do we have any current license that's not being used versus us extending? I I've got a problem with extending more licenses for liquor, gaming and all that. And I'm sure everyone on the council knows that. I made no bones about that. I mean, we're a small community and we probably got more uh liquor license and more gaming license than than any other community. And I have some strong concerns about that. I know we're talking about economic development, but I've not changed my position on when are we going to hold back on some of these establishments having all these different licenses? Especially if we're talking about extending. Now, I can see if you say there's some, and and I'm sure you haven't had a chance to do the survey. One, and I'm sure, you know, you don't know standing there right now how many open licenses or how many licenses that have not been renewed. Why can't we use those first versus uh extending?
So in regards to the number of licenses, our liquor code, which falls under the police regulations sections, only issues the number of licenses that are active. So there are no, if somebody leaves, that license is dead. There are, the the so, yeah, so that doesn't exist. We we don't hit. We're we're, we did that the smart way. We made sure that there weren't licenses, just people could scoop them up. Each uh each request for a license requires coming to the city council for an amendment to the code which allows the council to decide if for themselves, if if this is something they uh if they support based on the business model. And then at that point, once it's approved, the liquor commissioner gets the decision if he's going to approve the license or not approve the license. Um regarding uh number of licenses, uh we have not looked at liquor yet. We have done the gaming. When we did the gaming moratorium uh mid last year, uh that has been completed. The data's been aggregated. Um actually, my intent was to put that before the council uh on March seventeenth. Um, the liquor, the information gives us density of machines, the number of machines per location, uh how they integrate with the community that's there. Uh it's it's pretty data, data intense. So that way, uh the council has as much information as possible as they want to, if they want to continue to uh expand gaming, uh have gaming stand still, however they want to address that. So I hope that helps all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Move. He wants to do it all a bit. Uh. Okay, uh next one.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Coleman.
You forgot me. Yeah, you forgot me. Um, to clarify the conversation that I had. Uh cause I heard my name be mentioned. Uh she reached out to me because the business is in my ward.
Yes.
So that everybody has a location of where the business is. It's on the other side of the post office. There's a lucky jack, there's a la- Lucky Jacks on, there's a gaming place on the south end of the post office. And then there's another gaming place on the north end of the post office. So she's on the north end of the post office. Um, when she called me, what I told her, and I was wrong because I I I was thinking something different. I think like Mr. Jackson was. I thought all of the aldermen said that, you know, we were done with liquor licenses. So what I told her was, the alderman as a whole said that we're not doing any more liquor licenses. That's what I said because I thought that's what all the aldermen wanted. So now I'm being told it's a different type of license. So I would like an opportunity, I mean, she can reach out to me so I can view the establishment and make sure that we don't have another liquor store on Sheridan Road that is causing us issues like garbage and let me go over her plan with her and and lottery. We had issues with people standing outside the liquor stores on Sheridan Road. So I never really investigated or spoken to depth with her because I thought the answer was no. So that's, that was the conversation I had.
Okay, let me ask this and Alderman, uh can we still put it on council? Let you do your uh, you know?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's gonna be up to the council as a whole to see, you know, if we're gonna do it or not. So that's no problem.
But yeah, being in your ward, though, I would, I would think you should have the opportunity to speak to her regarding it.
But she needs to reach out to me. I don't.
We'll take care of it.
We'll make sure she does.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Hi, Alderman January here. My hand is raised.
Oh, okay. I see it now. Go right ahead, Alderman.
To the monitor, Mayor. Um, just wanted to ask two questions.
Good.
Um. One is when now according to our chief Jackson here, um the liquor license under our ordinance, once the business lapses or closes, that liquor license ends. So does that decrease the number of licenses in the ordinance? Or wouldn't the ordinance still have that like, let's say we say we have six licenses for this particular one? Um, and a business closed, but the ordinance still says six. But there's really only five. Can you guys clarify that for me? And then I have a second question.
I I think right now, if I'm not mistaken, that liquor license goes with that that business. It doesn't necessarily just create a license. We, that that license is created for that business. So if that business closed, that license is now going away.
Yeah, liquor licenses aren't transferable.
Okay, so but in the ordinance, we say there's six. So you're tell, you're telling me our ordinance is fluid with the decrease, whenever there's a decrease in the number?
Yeah, to to answer that question, that's a good observation, Alderman January. Yes, it is. It turns around and it uh when when actions taken by the council to increase or decrease an ordinance or increase uh a uh liquor license, that is given for our municipal code to be updated. Um, that happens periodically. I can't uh say with what frequency or how often, but I know that the clerk's office uh sends information to the company that does uh our muni code.
It's put online quarterly unless it's a um something that affects everyone and we put that on the immediate um immediately. That's how it builds, so that's, that's why it's changed.
And and the comptroller's office, Alderman January, also keeps a tab on uh what licenses are out there because they have to go through that office in order to um um get an application as well as make payment for it.
Okay, so when this amendment to this ordinance is brought to us, will it have the current total number? And then it'll show the increase by one or two, depending on what the liquor license is?
So on the ordinance, what it typically says is the the number that's increased and the liquor license that is being decreased. It says both things on that same ordinance.
Okay, cause I couldn't recall um if it if how it's written. Okay, and then my second question, thank you for clarifying that. My second question is um we're still in a moratorium with gaming, is my understanding, until we get that data reviewed and then we make a decision moving forward. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Okay, cause I'm concerned that these two businesses listed here in the committee of the whole are going, are looking for, and I know in fact, one of them is looking for gaming to be into their establishment. But we're in a moratorium right now, so we really would not be able to do that at this time. I just wanna make sure the aldermen understand that.
No, that that that's correct, Alderman January. The first one currently does have gaming in it, so it's already existing.
Okay.
Uh the second one that's before the the uh uh B W liquor license uh does not allow gaming. And I had conversation with the owner who's opening that business and explained to her that she uh would not be able to get issued a gaming license until a decision was made on the data presented in the moratorium.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And since we're on that one, that's Mia's Pancake House and Grill uh L L C at twenty-three fourteen Green Bay Road.
And and miss, Mister.
The old C Y O C.
Create your own cheesecake, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So and they're looking for a B W license for beer and wine for service at lunch. Um, and I guess a a a happy breakfast to.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Coleman.
Um, since I will be speaking with her, I I Um, since I will be speaking with her, I, I just want to make sure that um I don't misspeak and I have the, you know, what the council wishes as a whole. Can I hear how um, um, Mrs. Murphy uh and the Aldermen that haven't spoke, I'm asking that they speak, so when I talk to this lady, if the answer is, you know, as Aldermen, we're, I don't think we're doing any more liquor or anything, or hey, you got a chance, you know, you got two or three Aldermen that's on the line. I mean, can I get some help here?
Alderman, I think if she's in, inquiring that, she may want to go to the individual Aldermen herself.
Okay, I didn't know if it's something we should talk about on the floor, since we did the memorial, I mean, are we sticking to it? And does that include all liquor licenses for the moratorium? Or are we just?
It's just on the gaming, it's just on gaming right now, the moratorium.
And I guess what I'm asking the Aldermen is, do we want to do it on everything?
No.
Or just gaming?
Just gaming.
Just gaming, okay. I think that was Mr. Smith.
Yes, that was Alderman Smith.
Okay. Uh, uh Alderman Murphy, gaming or everything?
Um, I, I'm, I'm not prepared to be polled at this point, my understa-
Okay, alright.
My understanding, if I can finish my comment, is that there's currently a moratorium on gaming that we're in the process analyzing data to determine what, if any, next steps we want to take on gaming. Regarding liquor licenses, there is no moratorium currently, and I did not know that that was under consideration until you simply just brought it up thirty seconds ago, and I'm not prepared to discuss that at this point.
Oh, that's fair enough, that's fair enough, all right, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
All right.
Our right to move this one forward, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. And question. Alderman Smith? On number two, yep.
We're clear, we're not approving. And they're arguing right now, are they trying to do the gaming, the gaming?
They're not trying to.
Liquor, liquor would go forward to the council at the next meeting for decision.
Okay, Alderman January?
Mayor, um, just clarification because um, my understanding from the owner of Mia's Pancake House and Grill, look, I'm sorry, Lucky's, um, Lucky Spin.
Uh huh.
Um, as they already have gaming in there, are they going to plan on any more gaming?
There's a cap on the terminals.
There's a cap, okay, I just wanted to make sure, and just also want to make a comment, um, I, I'm agreeing with uh Alderman Jackson. Again, I have been very taking a very strong stance about all the liquor and gaming in our city. And this is a two-by-three city in which we have way too many liquor licenses, liquor stores, um, people passing out liquor within their establishment, um, under the licenses, many gaming spots, um, it's really destroying our opportunity for economic growth. And that, that is my opinion as an Alderman, and I've heard other entities that wanted to come into our, our area, they are nervous because of all of the liquor licenses and gaming um, at the connotation that comes behind that, so they're not willing to come. But again, I take a very strong stance that we really need to, to put a stop right now to liquor licenses, um, as well as the gaming. Um, I think we need to look at putting in more stringent wording within our ordinances regarding this. Um, and just looking and making sure that if we are adding anything to the city, that we're being strategic about it. Um, these liquor licenses, these places are just willy-nilly as far as I can see. And they're all over and on top of it, they're not even open the hours that they tell us that they're gonna be open, so we lose revenue. So it, there's a lot of, of background going on with these licenses, um, and gaming licenses, so again, I, my strong stance is I, I, I really would like to see our city put a stop right now um on both. Um, I'm thankful for the moratorium on the gaming currently, and I'm look, I am um anxiously looking forward to seeing what the data brings to us. So uh thank you for compiling that for us. Uh Chair, uh, uh Chief Jackson, we really appreciate that, that you took your time to get that for us. I really am looking forward to seeing that information, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, so both of these will be brought up on uh, uh, at council at the next council meeting to be voted up or down. All right? Alderman Murphy?
Two quick questions on Mia's. Um. Pancake House and Grill, are they open breakfast, lunch and dinner, or only breakfast and lunch?
Breakfast and lunch.
The idea here is that because they're a sit-down restaurant, they want to be able to serve.
Beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
Not hard alcohol.
Yeah, breakfast and lunch, okay, I just, I wanted the additional information. Thanks.
Anything else? Anything else, any other questions? Hearing none, uh entertaining motion to adjourn.
So move.
Then move Alderman Smith.
Second.
Second by Alderman Evans. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried, thank you, everybody.
All right, all right, all right.
I think we, I think we need a mic drop, but it's bad for the microphones.